Commissioners, this is Troy, your host. We are live and recording.
Thank you very much, Troy. Let's go ahead and come to order. Welcome, everyone, to the February 20th, 2024 Business Meeting of the Douglas County Commissioners. Let's start off today with an invocation from Pastor Jason Van De Veer, please, pastor.
Commissioners, Heavenly Father, we just come before you this afternoon, and, Lord, we just pray that you would just work in this time, well, not just this time here, but in our community, we just pray for returning to you, Lord. We know that much is broken, Lord, but that you are the answer. And so, Lord, we pray that you would just draw men everywhere to yourself, that you would continue to work through your Son, that he would come soon to rule and to reign in righteousness and to right this world, but that in the meantime, Lord, we would be walking with him, that we would be about his business, Lord, that you would give us godly leaders, that you would bless the leaders that you have given us, that you would give them wisdom, that you would bless the business of our commissioners and this meeting here today. And, Lord, we just pray for a focus on you. We love you, Lord, and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, pastor, for those words of wisdom and peace to begin our meeting. If you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, turning to the county attorney, counselor, do we have certification of this agenda?
You do, sir. The county attorney's office reviewed all items on the agenda. Any of appropriate jurisdiction over all matters?
Thank you so much. Do commissioners have any disclosures for items on this agenda?
I have none, thank you.
Nor do I. So let's go ahead and get right into our consent agenda. Consent agenda has been posted over the weekend at this time. Is there any public comment that the public, members of the public would like to deliver for any items on the consent agenda? And seeing none in the room, Troy, do we have anybody online that would care to give public comment on the consent agenda?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. At this time, the chair will accept any motion for items on the consent agenda.
I just have one question. I had sent staff some question about the minutes. Do we know if that was able to be fixed?
And county manager?
Okay, so the question I had is that it only showed in one of the business meetings there were only two commissioners present, but there were comments throughout the minutes for all three commissioners. And so I had sent that to staff to get that fixed, but apparently it's an IT problem listing all three commissioners being present, but we'll put it on the record here, and it's being worked on. Okay, thank you.
So any amendment to the record to be put on notices, all three commissioners were present for the meeting? Okay, and that has been confirmed by the clerk. Thank you very much, clerk. At this time, is there any further action the board would like to take regarding the items on the consent agenda?
I have a motion to approve the request in all items A through AL of the consent agenda. Item AM has been pulled from the agenda.
And I'll second that. Very well, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion that we'd care to have on the consent agenda? And none seen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And let's mark that down as no opposed. Moving on to the regular agenda, we're going to start off with a motion for the Transformational Homeless Response Grant Agreement in the amount of $1,600,000. And it looks like we have Rand Clark from staff presenting.
Thank you, Commissioners. Yes, Rand Clark, representing Department of Community Development. The request before you this afternoon is for approval of the Transformational Homeless Response Grant Agreement between the state of Colorado and Douglas County in the amount of $1.6 million. Let's turn this on. There we go. The Transformational Homeless Response Grant was authorized by the Colorado House of Representatives in 2022. House Bill 22-137, seven allocated $105 million in State American Rescue Plan Act funds to help local communities ensure that everyone has a safe and stable place to live. Douglas County applied for and was awarded $1.6 million in THR funding to support the efforts of the Douglas County Homeless Initiative. Along with other grant funds, the THR grant will provide funding for the homeless engagement, assistance, and resource team, our HEART team, into the year 2026. Funds will be used to cover salary benefits and operational costs associated with the expanding the HEART from three to five units, allowing for additional coverage later into the evening hours and over the weekends. $1,389,300 will be budgeted for navigator salary and benefits over this time, $46,500 for one-time operational costs, and $164,200 for ongoing operational costs. Staff recommends approval of the Transformational Homeless Response Grant Agreement between the state of Colorado and Douglas County in the amount of $1,600,000. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Rand. Do we have any questions for staff from the board?
I have done. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, no questions of Rand, but really some high compliments and high praise. We have seen the Douglas County Homeless Initiative really succeed through partnership and collaboration with staff, so many nonprofits, business leaders throughout the community, elected officials from all of our municipalities. And anecdotally, you know, in our travels, we know a lot of people, so we hear from a lot of folks. It seems as though a lot of the panhandling and at least the appearances of homelessness have dried up. And that's really high praise to the Homeless Initiative and the work that everyone has done well together. In particular, the HEART team, the homeless engagement assistance resource team, I have such vivid memories of sitting down with you and talking about what co-response in the Homeless Initiative would look like. And really, I want to thank my colleagues, Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Teal, for supporting the Homeless Initiative and the hard work that they have done in the Mental Health Initiative, which really birthed that co-response model, that community response team that did such a great job of diverting people from ERs and from county jails. So I know when you and I talked about co-response, it was a challenging initial conversation, but out of that was birthed HEART, and now we're looking at a wonderful group of teams. And for the listening public that is not familiar, again, it's just a navigator paired with law enforcement that goes out, provides behavioral health services, social services, and then, of course, if there is code enforcement, criminal warrants or other issues associated with those they engage, there's that balancing as well. It's also an opportunity to make, you know, those social workers a little more safe when they go out into the community, especially late at night. So I'm going on about six years here, and I know from my perspective, this board has always wanted to invest where there's a return on investment. And we're just seeing a huge return in the HEART team. So again, huge thanks to this board, my board, for supporting the HEART team and their great work. And I'm really pleased to hear from citizen comment. I won't ring in on whether or not I'm supporting it before a citizen comment, but just want to provide that high praise. Thanks, Rand.
All right. I've got no questions, Rand. I know this is something we've talked a great deal about. We worked up the formation of the HEART unit, and I know that we were looking to find a way to expand the program that we already had clear evidence of success. So, no, I think this is good news to share with us today. And without any further comments from the board, we'll open the floor for citizen comments. Is there anyone in the room that would like to make comment on this matter? And seeing none. Troy, do we got anybody who would like to make comment online?
Thank you, sir. I have no online comment.
All right. With no citizen comment, well, I think this is a great idea. Is there anyone else on the board who would like to take formal action at this time?
Mr. Chair, if there's no further discussion from the board, I'd be pleased and honored to make a motion to approve the Transformational Homeless Response Grant Agreement in the amount of $1.6 million.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Well, I'll just add, you know, I had compliments for staff, but I see some really important individuals in the room. Laura Sincony and Barbara Drake from the Mental Health Initiative, which really allowed us to adopt our model in the Homeless Initiative. Kevin Duffy, who probably has the biggest heart in Douglas County, was early and engaged with our Homeless Initiative. And then, of course, Pastor Van De Veer, the faith-based community has really come alongside us very strongly, so it's really exciting to see that partnership.
Any other comment? For my part, this is great. And listen, Abe, you gave a lot of credit out to folks just now. I'm going to take a moment to recognize you and your efforts. You know, you're the one that brought the HEART concept, the co-response concept, in order to craft the county's homeless response. And I'll tell you what, there are many aspects of the Homeless Initiative that I kind of thought you were crazy. You really had to talk me into it, and I'm glad you did. And when you brought the co-response idea before us, I thought that that was just genius. And it's good to see this recognition by the state. Let's be clear, these are federal funds that came to the state of Colorado and not directly to the county. And yes, we did use some of those federal funds directly from the feds to form the HEART team, but this is an acknowledgement from the state of Colorado that, you know, this is a grant. We had to go, we had to ask permission, we had to present our plan, and this $1.6 million is recognition for the soundness of that plan. And Abe, this couldn't have, well, we wouldn't even had it the idea were it not for you. So my congratulations to you, my friend. I think you should be very proud that this is not only a program that you convinced your colleagues to participate in, but obviously, it gave us a plan that we could take to the entire state, and the state could choose to participate in. I'm very much in favor of this. Any further comment from the board before we take it to a vote?
Well, Mr. Chair, I'm humbled and honored by your comments. And, you know, one thing I know for sure, sitting on a board of county commissioners of three, one commissioner is powerless unless you have at least one other vote, hopefully all three, to support an initiative. So if it were not for you and your support of something that maybe you didn't necessarily agree with at first, I was really heartened that that sort of collegiality and willingness to participate with me came to fruition. And I want to recognize Commissioner Thomas as well, who oftentimes attends our meetings and has been very engaged with JD23. So that is highly appreciated from both of you. I'll just add, at our last meeting, city and county of Denver was here in full force with elected officials, members of their staff, staff members that represented the mayor, and they gave a presentation. And you sort of sit back, and there's that old phrase that imitation is the highest form of flattery. And I don't want to say that Denver is imitating Douglas County. I know they have their own unique programs. But to see a measure of adoption of what we're doing in Douglas that's working and see that extrapolated out to the Denver metro area, what a great opportunity. And I'm really looking forward to future and ongoing relationships with our elected colleagues throughout the Denver metro area to just continue with the success we've had. But thank you.
Great work, my friend. Well, there is a motion, there is a second. If we'd like to proceed to the vote, and all those in favor of adopting this grant, say aye.
Aye.
And aye am an aye. There are no dissents. Moving along to our next kind of piece of good news, we do have a public contract for services for the 2024 Household Waste Program Contract. Dan Roberts presenting for staff.
Good afternoon. Dan Roberts with Douglas County Public Works presenting for staff. Want to present a little bit of information about the 2024 Household Hazardous Waste Program.
Now, Dan, we were warned-
Looks like we're having some technical challenges. I see it on my screen.
And, Dan, we do have it on the screen here at the dais.
Okay.
IT staff will be working on it. My apologies to everyone in the audience. We're probably going to just keep on continuing, and I assure you, we'll get the big board going as soon as we can. Dan, please continue.
All right, thank you. So the Household Hazardous Waste Program was originally offered by Tri-County Health Department. In 2022, that program was transitioned to Douglas County, and Public Works, working with the Douglas County Health Department, took over offering the program. We actually made a change from what was, at the time, these large drop-off events to a household pickup program. A vendor was selected in 2022, WM Curbside LLC, based on a cooperative purchase selection process. So the program offers curbside collection and drop-off options for property owners in Douglas County. This is the third year of the contract. So next year, we'll actually go out with the new RFP to select a new vendor. A little bit of data about the program and participation. So it is offered to all residents of Douglas County, including those that live in local municipalities. So just looking at a list of customers, we've had, through November of 2023, last year, we had 836 customers participate. A little bit over 480 of those were from unincorporated Douglas County, and the others were from Castle Pines, Castle Rock, Lone Tree, and Parker, just a mixed group of folks. Thank you. A quick look at just the material that was collected. The majority are household chemicals. There's also electronics, paint and latex, unclassified materials. Last year, through the end of November, we added a little bit over 60,000 pounds of material that was collected and either recycled or disposed of by the program. Before you today is a new contract in the amount of $219,402. That will pay for 900 appointments for pickup. The county pays $243.78 per customer, and then the customer pays a copay of $30. New this year, so we actually started when we took the program over from Tri-County. We wanted to try this new program, and we tried it as a pilot. We did not ask for participation from our county partners, but this year we are seeking their participation. And right now, we've lined up what we feel is about $100,000 in commitments from the local government agencies that will participate in the program for us. So that offset almost half of the program cost. So right now, staff recommends approval of a public contract for services for the 2024 Household Hazardous Waste Program Contract, Project CI 2024-010 with WM Curbside LLC, for an amount not to exceed $219,402. With that, I'll open up to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions from the board?
So, Dan, thank you for bringing this to us. I think this has been a really successful program. Can you tell us who the partners you have lined up for this $100,000 are?
So the local municipalities have agreed to participate financially, plus a lot of the water districts. So it benefits the water districts because we keep this out of the waste stream. You know, a lot of people are just going to pour this down the sink if we don't really give them an option. So I think we have eight or nine different participants, including all of the larger water and wastewater districts and the local communities.
That's really good. Thank you. I noticed that there were electronics listed there. I thought that people were supposed to take electronics to a place in Aurora. So do we pick up electronics?
So we do have a separate e-waste program, and we encourage people to use that program because it's much more cost-effective. However, if you are calling in for a household hazardous waste pickup, you can also have them pick up electronic waste, like a television or anything else like that. So we don't advertise that because you saw the price is pretty high for this. On a per-pound basis, it's not really terrible, but we're really trying to capture those chemicals in this program and the e-waste in the other program the county has, which is a lot more cost-effective.
So the county used to have a day, actually, it was Tri-County, that would set up a day, and we would have traffic snaking around Echo Stadium and backing up on Parker Streets. Have you found this to be a more effective product, or why did we decide to do this instead of that other project?
So most communities made that switch during COVID and have found, like us, that we think this program is much more effective. It's there when you need it. A lot of times, people are getting rid of their household hazardous waste when they're moving, so they're not going to wait around for one of the events. So the events were great when they, you know, when they started out, but they actually became very large and hard to manage, big traffic backups, and people would wait four hours or more to do that. This is more of an appointment-type situation. You call in, you get a packet from the waste management, and then you call and make an appointment. They come by and pick up. Or you can still drop off. But we think it's a lot more effective because it's there when you need it, and pricing-wise, we think it's cost-effective as well.
Well, I appreciate what you've done with this. I do agree with you that it's more user-friendly for the customers, so it's there when they need it. My last question is about the funding for this. Am I recalling that there are tipping fees at the Sedalia site, and that we use the funds from those tipping fees to pay for this project?
So I wish I could answer all the details about the revenue stream. That is a portion of the revenue stream for this. I don't think it completely covers the cost. Some of the costs of this might be covered this year by the bag revenue, which was pretty significant. And then, obviously, looking for our partners to participate financially is a key part. But I do believe that the tip fees are some of the Sedalia waste revenue as part of this program.
Is that right, Doug?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, I appreciate that. I see someone in the audience from Sedalia who's been concerned about the trash along 85 coming out of that dump. So I wanted to put that question on the record so Sujin knows that we're paying attention to what's going on in Sedalia. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I do have a couple of questions and maybe some comments. First of all, thank you, Dan. I think, you know, part of our statutory obligation is the health, safety, and welfare of the 400,000, nearly 400,000 we represent. And handling hazardous waste in a way that is responsible and appropriate, I think, benefits those citizens well. Great program. I often wonder, how do people hear about it? So in terms of the communication strategy, do you have a little bit more on that, and would you help us understand how people, how the average citizen would know to do this?
So we started out with what I would characterize as a soft launch because we really did not know what to anticipate. And, you know, as you can see, with the costs that's involved, we were afraid we'd be overwhelmed. We have a strong presence on the website, and I believe Tri-County knows to refer Douglas County residents to us as well. This year, we actually are increasing the number of available slots because it has become a popular program. But I think it's probably still fairly word of mouth. I don't know. Did we do, I think we did a press release or last year at about the same time of the year, and I think we'll probably do that again this year.
And I see you referring to one of our wonderful staff members, Caroline Frizzell. Maybe Caroline, if you wanted to come up and respond to some of the communication strategy.
Commissioner, the only thing I would add is that this is part of our regular social media rotation, along with the e-recycling. We try to let folks know specifically on Nextdoor, where they can take all of their different forms of waste. So it's in our usual rotation.
Well, compliments. Our communications team always do such a great job of ensuring people know what's going on. And Douglas County citizens are really responsible and vigilant when there is a program. I think they often will take advantage of that. Is that correct?
Yeah, we, I mean, we're encouraged every time. We send out a questionnaire with the packet that you get, and we get tons of those back, people that are complimentary, people with suggestions of how we can improve the program. So we do get a lot of feedback, and, you know, 99% of it is people are thrilled with the way things are going.
Great. Thank you, Dan.
All right. Well, I have no questions. I remember when we got the initial brief on this one. Sounds like it's a good program that's working out. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for any citizen comment. Is there any citizens in the room that would like to make comment on this matter? And seeing none. Troy, do we have anybody on? Oh, please, come on up, Efrem. Sorry about that. Please, sir, state your name, where you're from, and let us know what you think.
I'm Efrem Glass from Roxborough. I'm on the board for the Roxborough Village Metro District, and I'm also on the board for an HOA. I would say that I wasn't aware of this program. It would be good if we could tell, like, the local special districts, the HOAs, that this program exists so that they can disseminate to their residents that that program does exist and that they can participate in it. Because I know that for our residents, they're relying on whoever's dealing with their trash. So if it's the HOA who's paying waste management or whomever to take away stuff, they have special programs that they assume that's how they're going to get rid of their hazardous waste. They don't know about this program. So if you guys could send something out to the special districts and to the HOAs, I think that would help disseminate that information about the program much faster.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Glass. Appreciate it. Not a bad idea. I saw Caroline in back taking notes. Let's see how we can get those comments integrated into the county operations. Is there anyone else who would like to make comment on this matter in the room? And I'm looking twice this time. And seeing none. Troy, do we have anyone who would like to make comment on this matter online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Excellent. Thank you much. With that said, bringing back to the board for action.
I have a motion to approve a public contract for services for the 2024 Household Waste Program Contract, project file CI 2024-010 with WM Waste Management Curbside LLC, for an amount not to exceed $219,402.
There's a motion. Sir, second.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any discussion?
You know, I'll just add, I think what we heard from citizens and in our discussion is that it's a great program, but it might benefit from communication support. So if it does please the board, I would be interested in having a follow-up motion, since we are at a posted meeting, to direct staff to work with our metro districts and HOAs to ensure that that information is disseminated to neighborhoods. And I'll just add, you know, being chair of the Douglas County Wildfire Initiative or Wildfire Action Collaborative now, that has been a very effective tool. And I probably owe you both an update that, from their perspective, a lot of the programs we have approved have been met with success when that is communicated out to the neighborhood groups, the HOAs and the metro districts. Tough for the entire county to always get out information, but those people pay attention to their HOAs. They really do. So.
Okay, the chair will accept a second motion after the motion on the floor has been decided. Any further discussion? Well, I think it's a great program. It looks like it's working great. I think we should approve this contract. We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And there is none opposed. Contract proved. And Mr. Chair, the chair will be happy to entertain a second motion as preferred by the board member.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And only if it pleases the board, I will make a secondary motion to direct communication staff to work directly with county HOAs and metro districts to educate them and provide information about the program we just approved.
Chair recognized the motion and the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There are none opposed. Motion passes. Staff will take direction. Let's move on to the third item on our regular agenda, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the United States Forest Service and the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, state of Colorado. Dan Roberts presenting.
Good afternoon. Changing gears a little bit, talking about our agreement with the U.S. Forest Service. So a little bit of background, this is a program that's been in place since 1984. I thought it was interesting enough, I made a- 1984. I thought it was interesting enough, I made a copy of the page that was signed. Somebody might recognize who the commissioner was, or the commissioners back then, but of interest to Douglas County. Douglas County Public Works wasn't very big back then, so probably one of the five employees made sure that this work under this agreement took place. So what this agreement is, is it sets forms, terms, and conditions for the management of Forest Service roads that are also part of Douglas County's road network. So these are roads that provide access through the national forest but go to private property, or they provide connectivity between different roads of Douglas County's. So it allows Douglas County to perform general maintenance on these roads, and it also provides a mechanism for funding of improvements above and beyond routine maintenance. So most of the work we do is just motor graders, grading the gravel roads up in the Forest Service. Every once in a while, we'll design a project, working with the Forest Service, to do a more extensive improvement, such as installation of culverts or adding gravel or other material to the roadways. You'll often hear this referred to as the Schedule A List. That's a common terminology, probably used by county officials. And our Schedule A List contains a little bit over 44 miles of roadways. The biggest is the Rampart Range Road and access to the Devil's Head Campgrounds and other campgrounds in that area. And then there are also several other roads, such as Rainbow Falls Road, Trout Creek Ranch, two sections on Jackson Creek, Rim Road, Russell Ridge Road, and other smaller sections of roadways that typically go across Forest Service land and then into private property where residential neighborhoods have been developed. So I know that's just a long list, but to give you a sense of the locations, here's a map of the roadways. And you can see the Rampart Range Road, Devil's Head Campground is the largest road, but there are also several other roads, like 9J Road, Rainbow Falls. But this will just give you a sense of what portion of those Forest Service roads Douglas County maintains on behalf of the Forest Service. So it's been a longstanding agreement. We review it every couple of years, make sure it's up to date, give you a sense of what our expenditures were. Last year, we spent about $26,000 maintaining those roads. It's really just motor grader and an operator up there, not adding a lot of material. Those expenditures are offset by HUTF revenues, because we do list those roads on our state highway report. So we do receive revenue for those roads from the Highway User Trust Fund, or gas taxes, as most people know it. And then, just wanted to make sure that we listed that this year, we don't have any major work planned. So anytime we do come up with a project, there is an attachment to this agreement that we work with the Forest Service to come up with the overall project cost and cost sharing. So staff recommends approval of a resolution to approve the updated Cooperative Forest Service Agreement between the United States Forest Service and Douglas County. With that, I'll open up to any questions.
Questions for the board?
None for me. Thank you.
So, Dan, I see that you show on here that HUTF dollars pay for this. We don't use any PILT dollars for this, Doug, is that right? And what do we do with, let me ask you that first question. Does anything here go for a PILT?
I'll need to check into that and get back to you. At first thought, I don't think so. You know, we use the PILT monies to, in part, pay for the firefighting services as we give out checks. It does cover law enforcement costs, but I don't know off the top of my head how much of it covers this. I'll look into that and get back to you.
When you have a chance, I'd like to know how much. I know we give $100,000 to the firefighters in the Forest Service, but I thought we brought in like $200,000 or some thousand dollars. So I'd be interested in what the rest of that money goes for.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Dan, for all the work you do on this.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I have no questions for Dan. This sounds like, as you displayed, a longstanding project that we have with the Forest Service, and it seems to be working. Any further questions for Dan from the board? All right, let's go ahead and open it up to public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this matter at this time? And again, looking twice, I see none in the room. Troy, is there anyone online who would like to comment on this matter?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Thank you very much, Troy. With no public comment, bringing it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, if it pleases the board, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the United States Forest Service and the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, State of Colorado, regarding the Douglas County Cooperative Forest Road Agreement, Douglas County, Project Number CI 2024-015.
Second.
There is a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
You know, I'll just add, I think this is, this continues a longer list of great partnerships with the U.S. Forest Service. We're really seeing some great connection with Douglas County, and we have for some time, but it's really increasing, whether it's our Wildfire Action Collaborative, or some of these projects associated with our work here. So, good to see that.
Absolutely. No, I think this is a great project. I'm glad, a great program. I'm glad to see it continuing. I'm happy to approve. With that, let's go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There are none opposed. Resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate your time and presentation on this matter. Moving along, let's go to citizen comments and organization comments. And doing a time check, we got plenty of time for this. At this time, you're welcome to comment about any topic other than those that appeared on today's agenda. This is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us. Please state your name and where you reside prior to making any comments. You will have up to three minutes. And then Commissioner comments, if any, will follow all citizen comments. Is there anyone who'd like to come before the board and make citizen comments at this time? And seeing none in the room. Troy, do we have anyone online for citizen comments?
And I have no online comment, sir.
Thank you, Troy. With no citizen comments, let's proceed to Commissioner comments. Colleagues, anything to share?
None for me. Thank you.
I have none. Thank you.
I have none. I hope everybody had a great long weekend for President's Day. It's always good to take time to remember the legacy that has come down to us from the significant leaders of our nation. At this time, is there any other business to present to the board?
I have none.
I have none.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. And this time, County Managers' Report. Minister de Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nothing today, unless you have any questions on the report that is in your packet.
Commissioners, any questions pertaining to the Commissioner's Report in the packet?
I have none.
I have none either.
And nor do I. With that, our last item is to adjourn. Our next business meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 12, 2024, at 1:30 p.m. Thank you all for coming, and we'll see you next time.